Test one, two, three. Good evening. The Revere meeting for the Board of Appeals will now come to order. Could I ask for a salute to the flag, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call of the members, Mr. Hamdan. Here, Mr. Lemina. Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. Pelton. Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, form is present. First item on the agenda is Application A 2205, Thomas L. LeBrecq, 172 Endicott Avenue, appealing the order of the Inspector of Buildings/ Zoning Administrator, which states in part and in part, "This correspondence serves as my order pertaining to the erected deck located at 172 Endicott Ave. One, the erected deck is not conforming as to zoning and is also not in compliance with the building code. Two, the department plans to await a reasonable amount of time for the owner to bring the deck into compliance within zoning and the code and to comply with this order." The owner appeals the order of the Inspector of Buildings, which orders the owner to cure the zoning nonconformity of the exterior modifications.
This is a continuance from January and February. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Attorney Larry Simeoni, and I represent Thomas LeBrecq, the owner of 172 Endicott Avenue in Revere. He has filed an appeal in accordance with Part D, Section 15, of the Building Inspector's Order of December 15, 2021, and he asks this board to overturn said decision of the Building Inspector, in that he has filed with this honorable board a notice of appeal along with ZBA application and Exhibit 1. Also, he has filed an affidavit that is sworn to under oath as to the facts before you, and that will be presented to you in lieu of his testimony. The particular locus, 172 Endicott Avenue, is a two-family home. It's located in the RB district. It's 4,000 square feet with a 50-foot of frontage that was constructed in 1991. It is a nonconforming lot in accordance with 1708-540, which automatically by case law makes it a nonconforming structure. It is also a nonconforming structure in accordance with 1708-530, wherein various setback regulations in accordance with 1724-010, the dimensional regulations, such as the front, side, and rear yard, are all not sufficient and compliant. The ordinance before you that we'll be working with is the ordinance which allows modifications to one- and two-family homes. It's 1740-040, and it has like a two-step process. It states that "nonconforming, single, and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed; A) upon a determination by the Building Inspector that each such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconforming nature of said structure; and B) the issuance of a building permit where applicable." It also takes a second step. It goes on to say, "In the event that the Building Inspector determines that the nonconforming nature of the structure should be would increase the nonconformity based on the proposed reconstruction, extension, and alteration, the Board of Appeals may, by special permit, allow such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change where it is determined by said board that such modification would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood." In this particular case, we've submitted, as part of the record during the course of the proceedings, a notice of appeal that was submitted on January 7, 2022. The addition to Exhibit 4, Exhibit 1, was provided by January 24, 2022. A proposed decision and findings were submitted to this honorable board on February 15, 2021, and the affidavit of Mr. Thomas LeBrecq, which I've referred to just now, was filed with this honorable board on February 14, 2021. In accordance with the affidavit, and we set forth the facts, in February 16, 2021, the contractor named Marika Construction entered into a contract with my client for the rehabilitation of decks in the rear yard. The decks, it should be noticed, are also in violation of all the setback regulations, including the rear yard. February 28, the contractor submitted a plan that is identified as Exhibit B, Plan 15. That plan was reviewed by Richard Dix, the Inspector of Buildings, who determined that it needed some amendment, and so the plan was revised. That revised plan is attached to the Exhibit... Excuse me.
Madam Clerk?
I apologize. I submitted the affidavit so that the commissioners could look at it. Did you?
You submitted it so we could...
Look at it online.
No, I know. I just thought if they wanted to look at it during the...
We haven't. We haven't.
Oh, all right. Thank you. So, when you look at that affidavit, you'll see that the revised plan allowed for a first-floor deck and a second-floor deck of 40 feet by 13 feet, and a third-floor deck of 16 feet by 6 feet. Now, that particular proposal, now submitted by the revised plan, was minimal in its change as to the pre-existing condition. The pre-existing condition for the first-floor deck was 40 feet by 12 and 1/2 feet. The second-floor deck was 36 feet by 11.5 feet, and the third-floor deck was 16 feet by 5. The contract that is Exhibit A establishes it shall be the contractor's responsibility to file plans, permits, and inspections. On March 12, 2021, the Building Inspector's Office issued Building Permit B 21 000187, which authorized by right the proposed construction in accordance with 1740-040 A and B, and it's identified as Exhibit E. The construction began on March 26, 2021. Subsequently, in June 14, 2021, the contractor abandoned the project. On October 4, 2021, the contractor withdrew from the... withdrew his building permit without notice to my client. On September 9, 2021, the City of Revere sent on a notice of violation. With that notice, they indicated that there was an increase in the size of the pre-existing deck, and then the Building Inspector followed up with another letter saying the same thing. However, neither of these letters indicated in any way how there was an increase or to what extent there was an increase, and how... There was just a huge gap of information on this alleged increase. On November 19, 2021, my client decided, having had neighborhood complaints and dealing with a contractor that had, you know, basically left the site, he hired a land surveyor. And the land surveyor did a plan, a plot plan of land, and that plot plan is Exhibit H in this... Exhibit G in this proposal. And if you look at this plan, there are two things the board needs to identify. This is the plan where the deck was allowed, okay? It's Exhibit D. And then, if you look at the surveyor's plan, the surveyor's plan goes on, and they identify through the surveyor's plan, you know, exactly where the deck is today. So, when they look... When you look at the Exhibit G, you'll find that, in fact, the second and third deck were constructed smaller than what was allowed by the revised plan and the Building Inspector's permit. Deck 1 was wider, approximately 1.7 feet, than approved by the building permit. So now, we have 41.7 feet times 13 feet was the first deck, 36 by 6 feet, 31... 13 feet wide, and the third was 14 and 1/2 feet by 5 feet. We're asking you to overturn the Building Inspector's decision as to his requirement that additional zoning compliance is required, and we state that because the facts are clear and the law is clear as well. On March 12, the contractor did file an application for building permits for exterior improvements, and he did that, that the Building Inspector's Office or the Building Department did that by right in accordance with 1740-040 A and B. In order to give it a by-right permit, the Building Inspector had to make a determination, was required to make that determination, that the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure. And so, when asked to provide additional zoning compliance, my client's position has been, "The Building Inspector issued the permit. There is no real need for curative action on OPAT." The 1.7 feet, you will find that the case law that I'm going to briefly set to you, and I did provide you in great detail in the ZBA application, will show that when it comes to modifications, reconstruction, extension, changes to one- and two-family homes in the Commonwealth, that the courts have taken a very lenient position. In fact, they've gone so far, the courts, is to try to provide some information to boards like yourself and building inspectors by outlining the different things that actually exceed or don't exceed the standard of increase in nonconforming nature. In Massachusetts, there will not be considered by this court as a matter of law that there was an increase in nonconforming nature of structures, including the following, and this is the Boerling case, Boerling versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Norwell. Massachusetts courts have said that the addition of a dorma is not an increase in nonconforming nature, that the addition of an enclosure or porch or extension or sunroom is not an increase in nonconforming nature, nor is the addition of a one-story garage for no more than two cars, nor is the conversion of a one-story garage from one motor vehicle to two motor vehicles considered an increase in nonconforming nature. In addition, small-scale proportional storage structures, such as sheds, used to store gardening and lawn tools, used with swimming pool houses and equipment, are not considered an increase in nonconforming nature. The land court in the case of Cox versus Davis set forth this bright line, as they like to call them. Court said that when it comes to nonconforming homes that did not change the building permit, the building's footprint or living space, and resulted only in minimal height change to a portion of the structure, did not increase the nonconforming nature, and a by-right permit was allowed.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time, and also, we respectfully request again that you overturn the Building Inspector's decision in light of the facts and the case law. I'll answer any questions. You can. You do have the testimony of my client in affidavit form. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that this is a continuation of a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor. Seeing and hearing none, I will close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, anyone opposed? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Attorney Robert Hopkins. I'm at Phillips and Angley in Boston. I have with me my clients, Christina Napoli and Marcus Santos, who own and reside at the abutting 174 Endicott Avenue in Revere. We're here to oppose the appeal of Mr. LeBrecq, and we request that this board deny the repeal and order that Mr. LeBrecq must either reduce the size of the newly erected decking or otherwise seek the appropriate zoning relief from this board. To get straight to the heart of it, and with all due respect to Attorney Simeoni, the Bjorklin and Bransford cases that he just cited two are in opposite. Those cases deal with single and two-family dwellings that are only made nonconforming because they exist on an undersized lot. In both of those cases, there weren't any other nonconformities as to setback, as to height, as to anything other than those structures existing on a nonconforming lot. And in Massachusetts, if a otherwise conforming structure exists on a nonconforming lot, then automatically that structure is considered pre-existing nonconforming. What is relevant is the Comstock versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester case, where, like here, it was a single-family dwelling on an undersized lot but also had pre-existing nonconforming elements. In this case, it was an eve of a roof that was within the side yard setback. In that case, the Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester ended up ultimately granting a Section 6 finding and a special permit to the applicant after the Building Inspector made a determination that a 10-inch increase in the eve of this roof line further into the setback than where it had already been placed was, in fact, an increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure. So I would submit that it is Comstock that is relevant here, where you're dealing with additional dimensional nonconformities. When you increase that additional dimensional nonconformity here into a side yard setback where you're already in violation, that is an increase in the nature of the nonconforming structure, and that the building commissioner here in this instance correctly made that determination, and that Mr. LeBrecq be obligated to either cure it, i.e., reduce the size back to the original lawful pre-existing nonconforming size of the deck, or seek the applicable zoning relief. My client is also here, and she would like to say a few things about the project and how it has impacted her in her use and occupation of her home and her privacy.
Okay, thank you. Kindly state your name and address for the record, please.
Christina Napoli, 174 Endicott Ave. Well, yeah, so the word that kind of jumps out to me in this process and sitting through this is the word detrimental, detrimental, right? What we've had to live through for the past year, you know, it is what it is. This affects us. As soon as you open the front door of our home, the previous deck was never visible. You just opened the front door of our house, and this first-floor deck is now an extension of our living room. Excuse me. You know, the first-floor deck, the previous structure, it was set back. It wasn't a deck. It was a walkway on the first floor. It's now an extension of our living room, and the square footage is quite different. The use is different. A walkway is one thing. The ability to sit, have people, it's quite different today. So, that's the first floor. The second floor, again, the second floor stairs was recessed, and it was narrow. It wasn't as deep. So the second floor didn't look into our first-floor living room, dining room, kitchen in the same way. And that's just the first floor. The second floor, you know, previously, we have our master bedroom. We have our guest bedroom that faces the ocean. It faces the water. The previous second floor, it was set back, and it wasn't as deep, and for us, we had privacy. It was our bedrooms. We had privacy. What the structure that is there today, the second floor, there's the stairs, there's a landing that looks into our guest bedroom and our master bedroom. Literally, you don't know if someone's going to be standing and looking at you in your own bedroom. That wasn't the case with the previous structure. So again, just back to the word detrimental. So, from my perspective, and I apologize, you know, Mr. LeBrecq had a deck. It was generous in size. We also had privacy. So I'm just asking, you know, have your deck, but I think we're entitled to ask for the same privacy that we had previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Hi, I'm Bill McCatt, and I live at 89 Leverett Ave, which is behind the house diagonally. And the new deck is probably within a foot of the property line, and it's up about 25 to 30 feet and looks right down into our yard. I feel like it's, you know, taking away some of our privacy, and I think that it should be moved back away from the property line because it's about a foot away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
On the second and third-floor deck, Larry, you mentioned that it's... The width is shorter?
Yes.
Okay.
The existing condition, based on the surveyor, and I've provided, you know, you not only with Exhibit G but also a larger view, if you look at the larger view as proposed by the plan, you'll see that the current third-floor deck is 14 feet, 6 inches, and 5.7 feet. It was authorized to be 6 feet by 16 feet by the building permit. The second-floor deck was 30... is 36.5 feet and 13.1 feet. It was authorized under the building permit to be 40 feet by 13 feet. And finally, the first-floor deck, that was the second floor, the first-floor deck is authorized was 40 feet times 13 feet. In this particular case, it is 41.7 feet by the plan and 13.1 feet for the width, and that nets out to the 1.7...
1.7 difference.
Which is the increase on the side, if you will, or the width.
Okay.
Where our position is, is that, you know, it's de minimis. It's small. It falls in line with everything that the case law tries to avoid. If it's of minor consequence, it can never be, the court says, minor consequence, it could never be a substantial detriment to a neighborhood, and that's the standard the ZBA looks at when the ZBA is issuing a special permit. In this particular case, the building permit was issued by right by the Building Inspector. In order for him to build... issue this building permit by right, he had to come to the conclusion that there was not an increase in nonconforming nature by the construction proposed, the modifications proposed under the buildings... in the building permit. Had he felt that it was an increase in nonconforming nature, he would have referred this... he would have referred my office and my client to file an application for special permit to this board.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Do you guys agree with the dimension that was just read out?
Thank you. I... we know for a fact that the decks that were built were... all three are larger than what previously existed. Now, it may be that the plan that was originally submitted showed a deck that was larger than previously existed, but we know that the building permit was to reconstruct the deck that was there. And apparently, when the Building Inspector, Commissioner, determined that what was being built was, in fact, larger than what had previously existed, he then correctly corrected himself, as he's allowed to do, and then made the determination that what was built was an increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure. And so, we're playing games with the denominator, right? The denominator in these situations is what is the size of the lawful pre-existing nonconforming structure? If the Building Inspector... not what plans got filed later, right? If the Building Inspector incorrectly issued a building permit, and I think Mr. Simeoni even says that the... there wasn't a plan showing the pre-existing conditions, right? It was just a plan of what was proposed to be built. So I think it could rightly be that the Building Commissioner didn't know exactly what the pre-existing conditions were of the deck were when the original building permit was issued, but when it became known that the deck that was built was an expansion and, in some cases, a three-foot expansion from, you know, approximately four feet from the lot line to now, you know, 0.18 feet from the lot line, an expansion of what was lawfully pre-existing, then he issued the enforcement order that said that this was an unlawful expansion of the pre-existing structure and required that it either be brought into compliance or it be permitted properly.
I just want to ask you one more question. Did you do your own survey?
We did, and it was submitted along with our zoning memorandum that's dated January 20th. I also have extra copies if you would like to see one. Now, unfortunately, this just shows the existing conditions of the new deck and not the before and after conditions because no one thought to do one beforehand.
What I'm asking, did you do your own survey for 174?
For 174? Yes, this is a survey for 174, and it shows the expanded decks as well.
I want to match it with the other surveys, so we'll see, because I think there's some mistakes in here, and I want to look at it.
Okay. Yes, we did submit 14174.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy with you, sir?
I do.
If you don't mind, just for him to look at that now.
Of course, yeah. I'll just do all my things.
The attorney?
Yes.
These new structures, none of them cross the property lines, do they?
No, no, just...
At least one and two.
You should note that the pre-existing condition, all of the decks failed to meet the setback requirements. It's supposed to be 30 feet in the back, it was nonconforming. On the side, it was nonconforming. So, at the time, my client applied for the building permit with his revised plan, all three decks were nonconforming.
Okay, got it.
All right, let's put it this way, at least one and two were nonconforming.
At least one and two. What's the will of the members? Is there a motion? Yes. So, you have to just press your microphone to state the motion? Yes, to both. Yes. What would the motion be? To overturn the building inspector?
Yes.
Yes. For me. We already closed the public hearing, I'm sorry. So, is there a motion on the floor, motion to overturn the building inspector? Yes. Oh. Yes. So, okay, so there would have to be a roll call. Roll call.
On the motion to overturn the decision of the building inspector, Mr. Hamdan.
No.
No, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the decision of the building inspector has been overturned.
Next calendar item number, please.
Application A 2206, Stephen Chambelli, 22 Clark Road, Lynnfield, Mass., requesting the following variances of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere to enable the appellant to construct a new two-family dwelling on Lot 70 at 53 Tapley Ave. Variances are for respect to the requirement of four off-street parking spaces and minimum sideyard setback and minimum height requirement.
Good afternoon, please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Chambelli, 22 Clark Road, Lynnfield, Mass.
Okay, I think this speaks for itself, but seeing it as a public hearing, I will ask, is there any proponents? I believe we have one on record, Ashley, that was submitted. We already, we all have that in a packet?
Yes.
That's from the owner in 61. Is there any other proponents?
There was a, a proponent was, the letter was from John Chesna, 61 Tapley.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents, anyone opposed? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members? A roll call? Is there a motion to approve? We ask for a roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances to Stephen Chambelli relative to the construction of a two-family dwelling at 53 Tapley Avenue? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variances have been granted.
Thank you. Next calendar item number?
Application A 2207, Mario Zapage, 78 Mill Street, Middleton, requesting a variance of Section 17 14040 with respect to minimum area requirement of 6,000 square feet and frontage requirement of 60 feet for duplex dwellings in the RB district to enable the appellant to construct a new townhouse dwelling at 70 Bellingham Avenue.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Mario Zapage, 78 Mill Street, Middleton, Mass. I'm here to ask for variance to build a duplex on 70 Bellingham Ave. The ordinance says we need 6,000 square feet, and I have 5,300 square feet. And the frontage is 50 from 60 feet. By the right, the property is allowed to build a two-family home with the same size as the duplex. I'm providing the four parking spots. The only way, I want to do a duplex, because it's better set up the way the slope is, you know? And I got, I don't know if you have a, if I want to show you this, I don't think you have that, these plans, so I can show it.
You can't submit anything now, you have to submit it within seven days, but we do have the plot plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I will continue on with the hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members wish to speak? You build houses on weird lots. That's the next thing over from me.
No, usually those are burned-down houses, you know, that used to be a three-family home there.
Yeah, years ago.
Yeah.
Long time ago.
Long time ago.
What's the will of the members? Motion to approve? Motion to deny? Motion to? Motion to approve. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the variances for 70 Bellingham Avenue? Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variances have been granted.
Thank you very much.
Next application is A 2208, Basilio Di Flumeri, 439 Proctor Ave., requesting the following variances of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere to enable the appellant to subdivide existing Lot 2 at 243 Malden Street into proposed lots, Lot A, Malden Street, and Lot B, Malden Street, for the purpose of constructing a new two-family dwelling on proposed Lot B.
Good afternoon, could you kindly state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Christopher Kreidler, D'Ambruzzo LLP, on behalf of the applicant, and...
We actually don't need the presentation unless someone in the audience wants it, because we've already seen everything that's been sent to us.
Absolutely.
Okay. But if someone else in the audience would wish to look?
Absolutely.
Yes, please let us hear. Is that okay? Can you see it from there? Okay.
As Madam Clerk indicated, we are seeking some variance relief in order to subdivide the lot into approximately two 5,000 to 5,100 square-foot lots in order to accommodate the construction of a two-family dwelling on Lot B. Now, many of the, many of you may actually know the Di Flumeri family, they've been here for, I believe, since 1972, and often work within this area, and I believe all of the Di Flumeri siblings have, including the applicant, have actually been raised in the Revere area. Now, the lot in question is actually significantly larger than quite a few of the surrounding lots. It is approximately around 10,000 square feet, a little bit above at that point now. Many of this, many of the surrounding lots and neighboring properties actually are approximately the same size as the proposed Lot B, and many, quite a few of them are assessed as two-family homes. Both lots will actually contain adequate parking for all residents, so there is no necessary, there's no relief necessary for parking. And actually, many of those two-family assessed properties surrounding this particular lot, the proposed Lot B, are actually smaller lots in size than the proposed Lot B that my client is seeking relief for. Now, granting the relief will actually allow the applicant to make the best use of the parts, providing additional housing, including one of the units in which one of the applicant's brothers is planning on moving in. And also, just improve the neighborhood with the construction of a brand-new house. And we will gladly listen to any, or ask, try to answer any questions that Mr. Chairman or the board may have.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Nope, proponent. No problem. Seeing and hearing no proponents, I will close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents, opposed? Anyone opposed?
Hi, my name is Robert Naftal, and I live on Lantern Road, which is right in the section right behind where they're going to be building that.
Okay, we just need the number, Lantern Road, for our record.
17, 17 Lantern. Now, when they build that, right now, every time we get rain, our backyard floods, there's a lot of water issue in the backyard. Now, if they're going to be building and putting, taking out gravel, dirt, whatever, and putting in another foundation, that's less places for water to go. And it's right on the hill directed down toward our yard. So, basically, my yard will be a flood zone every time it rains, even worse than what it is now. And all the sewage that you guys have been trying to fix doesn't work in that area. We're in the low part of Lantern Road, it seems like everything just comes right down to that area.
Okay. Do we know what zone that is? Is this in a flood zone? I don't think that's a flood zone. Okay.
Well, it should be looked at, then, if, next time a good rainstorm comes in.
No, but it's not in the flood zone under the FEMA maps, that's what I was asking. You don't have to have flood insurance, right?
No.
Okay. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else?
Good evening. Denise Marullo, 237 Malden Street. I'm on the other side of that brick house. The single, it's supposed to be a single-family home there, at that corner, that you're building a two-family next to. However, currently, there's a two, it's a two-family. There are at least two or more families living in that single home. Now, you're going to build a two-family next to it. Where is the parking going to be? Are you going to allow for at least eight spaces?
We have to, we're concerned about the lot they want to build on?
Uh-huh.
And they're meeting four parking spaces as part of the zoning.
Only four spaces?
They, that's all they need for a two-family, for that lot.
For the single family across the street?
The lot, that any other lot is nothing to do with this. The lot that they propose to build on.
Even though it's Lot A that they're subdividing?
The lot that they're stating for us is, has to have four parking spaces on it. Not the existing, if the existing was already there, that's not relevant to the vote that we have to take. We have to look at just the lot that they're proposing on, that's on...
Only for the single lot?
Yes, that's, that's the way that the...
And they will have four spaces?
They will...
Because there is no parking on Malden Street on that side?
They, they have to have four spaces. There, it's in the plan that they're showing they have four spaces, each side of the lot, left and right.
Left and right, okay.
I have a question on, looking at the, the street map, you will have to have a utility pole moved there? You have the, they will have to move the telephone pole or electric pole on that property, because you're, to meet your, for the driveways?
My apologies, one second. If I may actually introduce Mr. Flumeri, who is the general contractor.
Oh, are you? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Basilio Di Flumeri. 69 Tedford Ave., recently moved. So, there is, there is a utility pole there as it stands. The way the aprons of the driveways are set up, or the one closer to the right, it should just clear the utility pole. Judging by the plot plan that you have, it may be, you know, a little, not as clear, but it should just clear the two curb butts where the two curb corners will be installed for the, for the driveway on the right. We have a little bit of play there with the, with the new proposed, we'll say, lot line there, so I think, you know, that utility pole shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
And can I, and regarding the water issue, the other gentleman mentioned, the way this lot stands, it's actually a few lots in from Lantern, Lantern Road or Lantern, Lantern Road, which I don't think it would directly impact it, to be honest with you. It's, like I said, it's several lots away and at least well over 150 feet away from Lantern Road. Again, I'm not sure exactly where that particular house is. But anything that is done for, for rainwater and whatnot will definitely, I think, you know, in terms of, you know, rainwater leaders for the gutters, which will go directly into the storm drain, which the city of Revere does allow, so any gutters, any rainwater leaders will, we do intend, we do plan on installing rainwater leaders that will help to, you know, mitigate the water issue, which will go, again, like I said, directly into the storm drain. Also, the current lot is, you know, substantially sloped. In building the home, yes, there will be a foundation in place where water can't filtrate through, but it will definitely level off the lot a little bit more. So, the, you know, the grade won't be as dramatic as what it is now, so you won't get a, you know, a firm slope. There'll be two driveways, which are channeling the water, you know, to the street, and then from the driveways back, it will, you know, like I said, kind of level off in the back. So, if anything, it would definitely make an improvement, I think, to any water issues that are currently an issue on Lantern Road or other, other nearby properties, whatever. And as well as a concern that the other woman mentioned, across the street on Malden Street, that house on the corner, it's on the corner of Malden and Steeple, that house has ample parking behind, behind that house. So, no parking will be taken away from the current house that's there. And yes, it's a, it's a one-family home, it's not a two-family home, there's extended family that lives there, and they use it, you know, at their discretion for its intended purpose.
So, on the back, if, on the, if you're on Steeple Street on the right side, you have how many spaces there?
So, if you're on Steeple, going down Steeple, Steeple's a one, yeah, it's a one-way. On the left... the left side, there's, there's ample parking for that, for that home there.
On the left or the right? Facing Steeple, if I'm on Steeple Street facing the home, you, the only place that...
You have to go down Steeple, and it's behind the house.
Right.
Yeah, where it is now.
Okay, that's what I thought. So you're not, that that stand is...
Exactly.
Okay. The elevation of the land next door is a little bit higher, but you pull in there?
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Are there any other members wish to, question?
Did I hear, like, the opponent say 70 Lantern, or what's the address for the other guy?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay, thank you. In looking at the plans, we're approving the plans that you're submitting here. So there can be no alterations to them when we approve them. So if the 20-foot curb cut in that utility pole has to be moved, you do have to move it. You can't make alterations and move the driveway over any, if we're approving the plans that you submitted.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear, because sometimes they try to do it with the building inspector, you'd have to come back in front of us if you want to make any changes.
Like I said, based on where the utility pole is, the, the apron should, should clear, yeah.
All righty. That was the only real concern that I had, was the utility pole there, because there's a lot of, there's a lot up on that.
Exactly.
Any other members? What's the will of the members? Motion to approve? Motion to deny? What, whose? Motion to approve? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
On the motion to approve the application, Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Loebz? Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variances have been granted.
We have one other item to discuss, and that's the...
Last item on the agenda is an open meeting law complaint from Durant Performance Coatings Inc. and Burbank Realty LLC regarding the zoning board of appeals meeting of February 16th.
Is there anyone here? There's no one in the audience? What's the...
Even though the person that filed this...
You want to put your name?
Even though the person that filed this open meeting law complaint is not here, the zoning board of appeals will still need to make a determination on what to do today with, with this. You have 14 days from the date of this, of the complaint to make a, make a determination on what to do, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to rescind our decision and allow them to come back on April 27th at 5:00 p.m. Can I have a roll call?
Roll call on, roll call from the zoning board of appeals to rescind the previous decision on A 2201 and reschedule a new hearing for April 27th, 2020, 2022. Mr. Hamdan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lemonna? Yes, Mr. Loebz? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes.
Having no further business, we will return on April 27th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.